Thank you. Good evening and welcome to the school committee meeting of Tuesday, February 16th. We are here at 5 o'clock. We're going to get started. There's nothing under the acceptance of the minutes. And nothing under audience superintendent's report. We will pass to Ms. Colleen for Lizzie.
Good evening. Dr. Cron could not be with us today, so I am here in his place. And there was nothing under the superintendent's report this evening.
Thank you. That was quicker than I expected. We have nothing under communications, nothing under reports, nothing under old business, so we'll move into new business. And our first item is quarantine duration.
Yes, and Jane is going to put up a document.
Can everyone see that?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, so as you all know, there's been much discussion about our quarantining guidelines right now. We're at 14 days. So we've taken the opportunity to see what other towns in our surrounding areas are doing. So, according to the CDC and Department of Public Health, the optimal time for quarantining is still 14 days. On December 8th, that's an important day, December 8th, we were presented with three options to reduce this 14 day period. And they're listed here. First one is a seven day quarantine. With the release on day eight. Given that a test is taken on day five or later and is negative. The individual has not experienced any symptoms. And the individual still conducts active monitoring through day 14. So that's a seven day quarantine with the release on day eight. Okay, we have another option was a 10 day quarantine with release on day 11. This particular option has no test necessary. An individual has no symptoms. But the individual is still active monitors through day 14. And the third option is a 14 day quarantine with release on day 15. If the individual has no symptoms. They have experienced symptoms even if there's a negative test. They have symptoms even if there's a negative test. And then the individual also is actively quarantining through the end of the period of the 14 day period.
For Lizzie, I'm sorry, I really don't mean to interrupt. But we began the meeting with the comment that, as many of you know, we've been talking quite a bit about quarantine time. Before we skip into the contents and the brass tacks of this, could you please explain to us why we've called this emergency school committee meeting? This is not a normal school committee meeting. And can you explain to us what the impetus was for us all being here tonight?
There's been discussion about the 14 day quarantine. And so because of that, we started looking at what other towns are doing. There's been.
Well, has there not been a change in the advisory from our Board of Health Agent and the directive to which she has advised our school?
Yes, Jane is going to get into that next with her data, the Rockland data.
I just kind of want the community that we're talking to right now, just to kind of understand why we're here.
Oh, yes, absolutely.
And why we're looking at the data that we're looking at.
So I'm presenting right now with the three options that CDC and DPH has given us on December 8th. And what our current period is is 14. So this is kind of the the lead up to what Jane is going to give us with the Rockland data and what the DPH in Rockland is doing. So this is just. Okay, and also we want to look at the towns. We have the towns surrounding us and what their guidelines are, the 7, 10, 14, or just 10 or 14. So now Jane is going to take us through the whole Rockland scenario.
So Mr. Biggins, it became apparent to us last week during discussions with, I'm going to stop sharing this document now, if this is okay with folks?
Yep.
Yes.
All right, I'm going to hold on. I need to, I've lost you all.
We can see you.
Okay, I just need. Okay, all right, everyone can see me. So I'm going to stop sharing this document. Okay, there everyone is. Hello. So last week, as we were discussing various quarantine options. It became apparent that the Board of Health, specifically the Health Agent. Primary function. Regulatory authority is to ensure that the Rockland Public Schools meet the required minimum protocols established by the Commonwealth of Massachusetts. We do not need to adhere to Board of Health recommendations to go above the Commonwealth of Massachusetts regulations. However, we do need to meet Massachusetts regulatory minimums for protocols. It had been our working understanding that the Health Agent had the authority to establish higher than the minimums. And we were required to meet the standard that she established. It became clear as we were discussing the various options, because quite frankly, for the first time, we weren't necessarily in agreement with something that was being, something that had been established by the Health Agent. That we were free to not do the same thing as the Board of Health was recommending. Even that we were not required to do what the Board of Health was recommending as long as we met the Massachusetts required minimum. So we felt it was important to bring that option and that authority to the full committee's attention in public. And therefore, we decided to have an emergency meeting. To bring these options forward to the school committee.
Thank you.
Okay, so I will now attempt to share because I have a few, if that's okay, may I share another document?
Yes.
Okay, so. So this document here, can people see this? Okay, Mr. Mills had asked for us to provide some context to case activity at our last meeting. And what this shows here, and this is when the Department of Public Health began sharing this information, is November 11th. And this is the number of people tested over a seven day period. How many were positive and therefore our positivity rates. You can see here. We were significantly increasing. It is here that CDC released the new quarantine options. Which, to be perfectly candid, we were all exceptionally skeptical of at that time due to the increase in case activity that we are experiencing both as a community and as a school community. In fact, we were so concerned about the level of activity based upon the recommendation of the Health Agent. We made the decision to go completely remote. The week following CDC's release of the new quarantine options. Now, as we see our case activity fortunately beginning to decline three consecutive weeks. We believe it is very appropriate for us to have a conversation about quarantine periods. The reduction in quarantine periods. If I can show one other slide, please?
Yes, Jane, thank you.
All right, just one other slide to give some context. Here. And again, this was in response to Mr. Mills. Can folks see this?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, this is our case activity as a school community. And this is showing us our activity since we switched to our new reporting format, which gives a snapshot of each building each day. That a new case is presented. So again, we can see, although we've had a little bit of an uptick here. We are still going down. Okay, and these are days, and again, this is presented by weeks, October 10th to the 11th. Okay, we are continuing our slide down. So again, that's just to reinforce that we believe it is an appropriate time for us to have the conversation regarding our changing the protocols. Quarantine. So with that said, much discussion internally has been had with our medical team. Our medical team consisting of our five building nurses, head nurse Kathy Ryan, Ms. Felizy, Dr. Cron, and myself, the three non-medical personnel, and Delshaun Flip at Town Hall. And with the leadership team of the Rockland Teachers Educational Association. And it is the nurses' recommendation that we move to a 10 day quarantine period with a negative test result on the ninth day. The Rockland Educational Association has signed off on that. That is our recommendation to you. I have been asked by Town Hall to inform you that the Health Agent does not agree with this recommendation. She would prefer that we remain at the 14 day quarantine period. If we were to adopt this recommendation, if this recommendation were to be adopted. The Town Hall employees would be subject to a longer quarantine period than Rockland School Department employees, but that is within our authority to do.
So Ms. Kathy, you're saying a 10 day quarantine, testing on the ninth day with release on the 11th day?
Correct.
And that's what you're recommending? And that is going against the rest of the town? Am I right? The Fire Department, Police Department, all of those other departments in this town are doing 14 days. And this is our first time having the conversation to go less than the 14 days? Correct. Okay.
Can I ask another question? Yeah. What's the status of our ventilation systems? I'm sure they've been tested, right? Are they all up to date?
Yes, we provided that information during the reopening committee in the fall. Prior to our opening school back up in our current hybrid model.
Have you tested recently though?
There's been no follow-up testing since then.
I would suggest we do that before we open up schools.
Well, this is not opening up schools. This is just.
General comment, yeah. When you talk about opening up schools, that was something that came to mind. Go ahead, I'm sorry.
That's okay. Does anyone have any questions about this subject right now? Go ahead, Mr. Biggins. You're on mute.
Sure, I'm sorry about that. So before, with questions, just a comment. It's bothersome to me, and it's not, it's not anything, anybody on this committee or anyone on this meeting. It's concerning and bothersome to me that since the summer that we had our reopening committee. Lots of volunteers across our town working very considerately and giving of their time to work towards solutions with our staff and our administration on getting our kids back in school based upon a certain set of data. And that data was presented to them that we were under no choice whatsoever but to follow the Board of Health Agents' recommendations. Now, I'm not saying that that would have changed anything that happened or that would have happened. But that is a very material piece of information. And I'm disappointed that there was a miscommunication from our Health Department to our schools in that way, because it may very well have affected it in a very material way. How certain individuals approached reopening our schools. Now, that being said, as far as Jane's recommendation and Alan's recommendation, I should say, of moving to 10 days, I would absolutely support that. It doesn't sort of matter to me a whole lot as far as what other departments are doing. We're the School Department, we are a school committee. We don't oversee the Board of Selectmen, we don't oversee Town Hall staff. It is our burden and our responsibility to worry about our staff and our students. So I feel as though it's a recommendation of our superintendent. I would be very happy to do that. I feel like that would put us in line with, still behind a little bit, but I think in line with the vast majority of other districts around us. And then following up those comments, my questions would be as far as, has there been any consideration given to, or I wonder the thought behind now, when a student has been a close contact. For example, if there's multiple family members, siblings in a family, and if someone has been a close contact before there'd been a positive test, all members of that household are to stay home. Whereas just not that one student who was a member of that close contact. I'm wondering if we're in line also, and I know I haven't asked this question yet, you've done a great job, and I appreciate getting the data on what other communities are doing, but I sort of wonder where we are in line with other communities on that piece as well. It just stinks that if, you know, before a positive test, if there's multiple kids in a family. The small chance that someone may have come into contact with someone, now we're impacting an entire family's learning. And let's be honest, the stay at home learning is just not up to date and adequate with being in schools. So those are my comments, and then that's my question at the end.
All right. Well, I appreciate the comments. And to answer the question, I believe we are one of very few communities in the area that do what we're referring to as the close contact of the close contact. Sort of the one step removed piece of it. And we too became gravely concerned about the number of days that was resulting in folks missing learning. And frankly, in staffing our buildings. From both the staffing and time on learning perspective, we were concerned. And we were referring to that commonly as the, as a third cohort, it was making the third cohort larger that our staff was dealing with teaching. So that question was really one of the main drivers in us aggressively seeking the testing. Because now that we have the testing with the 24 hour turnaround period, we have reduced that time lost really to one day. For families and staff, and in many cases, just a couple of hours. We have staff coming in at 10 o'clock. So I think that's something, in addition, Mr. Biggins, that would be worthy of us discussing going forward. We did not, within this context, because we felt the more urgent was addressing this quarantine issue. We have contained the close contact of the close contact, really to hours.
Yeah. Question of mine since our last time having the opportunity to be.
Right, yeah. And I think it's a great question and something we can keep looking at going forward.
Thank you.
I think that all of this is very fluid, Mr. Biggins, and I think that this is what's going to continue to go on, is we are all going to continue to have questions. And we're going to all need to continue to hash things out as we go. Anyone else have any questions to the 10 to 14 day quarantine?
That comment that you just made to me, this is not about being fluid. This is information that was pertinent back in August. This isn't, this is the same information that we should have had back in August. And again, I don't mean to interrupt, and I don't mean to be critical of anyone in this meeting. But it's concerning to me that as we're trying to do something as important as getting our children in town into school, that that wasn't something that was considered at any point until now, that we just learned in a phone call that I received from a Health Agent. It's just concerning. I don't know how that miscommunication happened. I don't think it had anything to do with anybody in this meeting. But I think that that's an important piece of information, and it was important enough for us to call an emergency meeting tonight. So while your comment about things being fluid, I appreciate, but this is sort of a big deal, I think.
I didn't mean my comment to that part. Of your conversation. I meant that you were asking about close contact to the close contact.
Yeah. It is going to be fluid.
So that's what I meant, not your conversation with the Health Agent.
Okay.
Anyone have any questions?
I do.
Go ahead, Mrs. Hennessy.
Hi, Jane, going towards the 10 day with the additional testing needed on day nine. Do we see volume spikes? Do we have any concerns with hitting our 35 tests? And the impact of ensuring all of those people on day nine can get tested? With it being sort of that rolling 10 day period. Not more concerned about that, but just, you know, outlining the process. If you are in quarantine and you're coming off quarantine on Monday, you're available to get your day nine test on Saturday. And you're really just making sure that we have that coverage and the ability to support those additional tests, right? Because if you were quarantining for the 14 days, you did not need a negative test. So it's just making sure we understand that process and any implications. I also agree, I think the 10 day is a great move forward. I just want to understand the implications of additional testing. Obviously, making sure the public knows that they have to test now and before they didn't, and what are the families going to react in that nature? In order to get them back in school and if they can then override and go 14 days without a test, if people don't want to give their kids tests and that type of process and not being penalized if they don't come back on day 11, and they can still go 14. So having that other option, you know, having both for the folks that want to come back a little sooner because they can get a test. So I know I just asked a couple of things, so I'm going to let you speak now.
Let me try to swing one at a time. So overall, yes, and testing is, and I'll get into a little bit more detail, but testing is, I did request to be on the agenda tonight. Unfortunately, the COVID allocation from the town has expired. We have expended our COVID allocation from the town through the Plymouth County CARES Act. And it was that revenue source that we were using to fund the testing. That being said, we have the capacity to test. All right, we're using the testing for several tools. The direct answer to your question is yes, we have the capacity to test on day nine. Even if that's a Sunday or even if that's a Saturday. We have the capacity to test on day nine. However, we are testing more than day nine because we are also using day nine, excuse me, or we are also using the testing capability to prove someone negative when they leave the building, when they're identified as a close contact. To again, try to minimize that third cohort of a close contact of a close contact. If a staff member is notified that they were a close contact on Thursday. We're testing them on the way out the door to prove that they were negative when they left. So we know that they exposed no one in the building. So that way, we know we're not, that they did not create any contacts. We will test them again on day nine. So we will, we have been, and we will continue to test people more than once. All right, we are paying, it's $50 a test. Okay, and we are paying hourly, the nurse's hourly rate for weekend testing. There are also times where we need to pay custodial overtime to open the building to provide that testing. All right, so, but the priority is time on learning, safety, of course. And time on learning. So yes, we can test, we can handle the capacity on day nine. We've had a few athletic incidents that have triggered our exceeding or hitting the ceiling of the 35 day. And I've simply made a phone call and social hospital in the Broad Institute has allowed us to deviate on those days. It's a lab capacity issue, which we to date have not been declined, exceeding our capacity.
I have a question. Always have a question.
Hang on one second, Tom. Jamie, was that good?
Yeah, that was good. And I think we can maybe talk when we circle back on the 10 and the 14. Just what would be that process if people didn't want to come back on day 11 and they didn't want to get a test on day nine? Allowing them to still quarantine for 14 if they wanted to. If that is on the floor. It's not an all or nothing. And I know Tom has a question, and I think I see Dan as well.
Mr., we cannot require anyone to test. We can require, we can not allow them back.
Okay, Mr. Mills, go ahead.
Yeah, my question is, what is the threshold? If we start testing, what's the threshold percentage if to close the school again, the district or whatever? Is there a threshold, if we start testing, can we get to a particular, what is the threshold to stop considering closing down again?
We are testing and have been testing daily since, since school break, since December break. It's based on a, you know, building by building, activity by activity level. For instance, we have had higher case counts at the high school now than when we closed for two weeks in the fall. Because we've learned a great deal. And then, and with our testing capacity, we firmly believe that we have been able to identify and minimize what I refer to as the circles. We get the original outbreak of two or three kiddos or two or three staff. And by quickly testing those around them, we're stopping it. The second circle is much smaller than it used to be, and there is no more third circle.
Okay.
Okay. So it's, the initial outbreaks occur within a group or cohort. And then our rapid testing, not rapid, meaning it is, it's a PCR testing. We're minimizing the size of the second, and we're really eliminating the third. Whereas with our bubble that occurred in the fall in the high school, specifically in the sophomore class. We went one, two, three very quickly.
Right.
And any closure recommendations that we have, we're required to consult with, but not necessarily comply with the Commonwealth of Massachusetts. We have received some inquiries from the Commonwealth regarding our case activity over the course of the last several weeks, and we've been able to reassure them with our data that we are safe to be open.
Okay, so as we go along testing, if we start seeing an increase, we are going to make a decision somewhere along the line to either keep the schools or the district open. And, you know, and we don't, and that's going to be a determination on that day. What I'm saying is, if all of a sudden we have 5%, 5%, 5%, and then 30%, what are we going to do?
It depends on the circumstances. What I've learned every day is that every single case in every single scenario is different. And each needs to be explored on its own individual merits.
Okay, so it's going to be an ad hoc decision at that time. So we would close down a individual school or would we close down the whole district? Again, is that?
We have, we have done both today. And we would explore each option based upon the circumstances as they present themselves.
Okay, as teachers are, are we replacing them with subs or not?
We have building substitutes in each building. We also have COVID subs. And we have a COVID room sub in each building, and we have Paris in each building. We have been very hesitant, although we have used substitutes to introduce new members into our buildings. We're trying to keep our cohorts as established cohorts. And not really bring too many folks in, with the exception of some long-term, regular, long-term sub situations.
All right, how about school support staff, cafeteria, custodial services, nurses, whatever?
We have had. We have had activity at all of those levels.
Okay, but what happens if we, say, for instance, we don't have a nurse that day, do we get, do we get a substitute nurse? Do we get, do we get a substitute nurse of the cafeterias, get, all the cafeterias workers call in sick one day?
We have had, uh, we have had the high school and middle school principal, um, work, um, through some of those situations regarding serving lunches. We brought staff in from other buildings. On, other cafeteria staff, we brought one in from each elementary school and brought it to the middle school, high school um, in order to, uh, continue, uh, to serve lunches. Also, the, um, high school and middle school administrative staff helped with serving of the lunches. And we were able to continue, um, to provide our pickup for those families, um, in need at the custodial level. Um, we've had some experiences with some custodial activity where we've done, um, similar things. Our goal is always safety first and keeping students in buildings. As close to a second as you can be without being a first.
Okay, how, how often do we test the, uh, the support staffs, custodial people, the custodians?
We're not doing pool, um, surve- surveillance testing. We're testing when someone has been, someone has been identified as a close contact or a household member has been identified as a close contact or someone is exhibiting symptoms.
Okay, how, how quick do we get those results back?
Twelve to, um, what, twelve, pretty much between twelve and fifteen hours.
Okay, thank you.
Right, I'm gonna move, thanks, Tom. I'm gonna move on to Mr. Biggins next.
Thank you, thank you. Uh, not a question, just a comment. Um, I had the experience to have to take, uh, my family through the middle school testing, uh, within the last, uh, week or so. Um, and it was so well-run, it was so efficiently well-run. It was, um, it was amazing. I went in and brought my sons in and Kathy Ryan was there and made them. It was not scary for the little guys at all. Um, it was easy, we were right in, we were right out. Um, Mrs. Hackett was right there to say hello as we got out of the cars. Um, line moved extraordinarily swiftly. Um, I, we got there a little bit early before it opened. There was, before it was scheduled to open, and they were already hard at work, they were already pumping people through. And, you know, it's, it's moving super efficiently. So, um, I just want everyone in the school community to know that that asset is available. And I also wanted to really, um, commend the school department for really being such a good spoken in the wheel, being ahead of the curve on making sure that testing is available. But being a good spoken in the wheel as a community and being willing, able to, um, in offering to host in, you know, vaccinations sites should it be available down the road in the future, uh, for community testing. I know Dr. Cron has really reached out and has really let the community at large know that the school department is uh, w- willing and able to be a, a ready partner in any way for, uh, public health in the community. And I think that we're setting a really good example in that way. Uh, but just quick, that, I just wanted to quick comment on the testing, having had experienced it, it really just went super, super quick. Um, and we had our results within twenty-four hours over the weekend. Um, so it's just a, really a great, um, tool for our community to utilize through all this.
Okay, sounds good.
Thank you. Ms. Davidson, did you have any questions?
Yeah, my only question would be, um, how is this going to be communicated, um, to the staff and the students that, and the parents, obviously, that, um, it's going to be changed from ten to fourteen days, most likely?
We will have, go ahead.
I was gonna say, once it's approved, if it is, if it is approved, we will notify parents by the ways that we normally notify them through connected, through phone calls or through mail.
And will reasons be listed of why we're changing from fourteen to ten days? Will there be like data providing, like the presented tonight, just in case we have some backlash from the community?
Absolutely.
The, ju- just as a reminder, um, that we can't require them to test. So they will still have, anyone who is uncomfortable, um, with, you know, this period of time for quar- quarantine being less, they're still free to quarantine for fourteen days. We're, we're providing an option to, for them to reduce that period, not make it any longer. And they're free to go for the full fourteen days if they'd like to.
Okay, um, you're.
I, I, just a comment on that, we, I know we can't require them to have testing, I, I understand all that. Are we requiring them to, to prove that they hadn't had it, yeah, doctor's note or something like that?
For, for, I, I'm sorry, I, I don't understand, Mr. Mills.
Well, if they, if we, if we're not requi- we can't require them to have testing, do we require if they had been sick to come back with a doctor's note? Or come back with a doctor's note saying that the doctor says that they, they're fine indeed, you come back to school?
They have to be seven, seventy-two hours, um, symptom-free. We do accept a doctor's note for an alternative diagnosis, most commonly strep. Um, is, you know, can make both, you know, strep and bronchitis can mimic COVID. Um, we have had instances where students have come back within the fourteen-day period without a test with an alternative doctor's note diagnosis.
Okay, all right, that's one of that. So we, we, we're looking for some proof that there, somebody has determined whether we determine by testing or like determine that they can come back by a doctor saying, hey, they're, they're fine indeed.
I think there have been three people and we've tested over four hundred. I think there have been three families who have chosen not to test when someone is sick and they've gone to their own doctor instead.
Okay, yeah, but we're, yeah, that's fine, thank you.
So, everyone, go ahead, Emily.
I was just going to make a motion, but go ahead.
Thank you. So will you say it all the way out, a motion to move to nine days? Um, ten days with nine days test, at the ninth day testing?
Released on the eleventh.
Motion.
Second, you have a motion?
We have a motion.
One question, I should raise my hand on Zoom, I'm sorry, because I'm like, what, okay, who can see me? Um, I am going, we'll let the motion pass in a sec, or be motioned in a second. But, um, we are tracking student data. So if we see that post-flipping to the ten days, that we're seeing activity or positive results or people coming back on day eleven and all of a sudden they come back positive and have symptoms on twelve, thirteen, fourteen, we're able to look at that and we would just, oh, obviously bring that back to this group to, to reevaluate the data. I know every two weeks when we have our, our school committee meeting, we do talk about the trend in the COVID data. So I just want to make sure that what we are passing, I think this goes back to Jill, your fluidity, right? Like, because we are changing direction, does it mean we're stuck in that direction forever? And again, if the data keeps getting better, maybe potentially we put a motion to be seven days. So just making sure the public is aware that we're making one step forward, but that doesn't prevent us from potentially stepping back if there is changes, and I think, Mr. Mills, you were saying this. We have to be reactionary based on the data that comes out on any given day. So with that, I just wanted to, to make sure that we just kind of clarified that because sometimes I know people say, well, that's the direction you were taking. And they have questions about how do we reverse that direction if we need to? And it would just be another meeting, uh, at this time where we would.
Well, also, the, the school nurse, if they, if she's sat seeing an uptick in, uh, in, uh, uh, activity, negative activity, and then, uh, oh, you know, positive activity, whichever way you were counted, is that they, you know, the principals would know, we would know real quick. If, if that's, that's happening, and then whatever can happen after that. But, you know, we, we enclose schools anytime real quick.
We have, we have seen, we have, we have seen symptoms manifest between the, and the fourteenth day. However, our nursing staff is confident that those symptoms manifestations would have been caught with a positive test on day nine.
Okay.
That's great, Jean, thank you for clarifying that.
That's good to have hit that history, that information, thank you.
Thank you both, thank you, Jamie, for asking. So we have motion, we have a second.
Second?
We need a, you motioned, right? Emily motioned, may I have a second?
Second on the motion.
Second on the motion, thank you. All right, I'm gonna roll call vote from here on out. So we're gonna roll call vote, um, we'll start ladies first, Mrs. Davidson.
Yes.
Mrs. Hen.
Yes.
Hennessy.
Yes.
Thank you, Mr. Biggins.
Yes.
And Mr. Mills.
Roger that.
And I'm a yes as well, so that's five on changing the quarantine duration. We will now move on to in-person versus remote school committee meetings. Okay.
Motion to have in person.
I also, um, I have a slide, um, I, I have a, um, a share, a screen to share here too as well, if I may, Madam Chair.
Sure, you may.
Can folks see that? Is this the? Bridgewater, Blue Hills, et cetera?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Alright, so this is the same group that we sent an email out to regarding ten, seven, ten, fourteen days. We sent, um, this out, these seventeen, um, have responded to date. You can see it's, um, it's, it's mixed. A handover just came in while we were, while we were talking. So, um, some are remote and some are present. The two, just so you see over here, is this is, this is a regional district, they have five school committees. Three of them are remote and two are in person. So just informationally, um, I was asked to put that together, so I have. If I can stop sharing that now, is that all right?
Yep, thank you.
That data seems to be split just about right down the middle.
No, it's, it's higher in, in remote.
All right. I agree.
Yeah.
Does anyone have any questions or comments before we go into motions and voting? Go ahead, Mr. Biggins.
Data or no data, it bothers me, um, greatly, quite honestly. Uh, the committee was, we have met in person during this pandemic. Uh, we were meeting in person during this pandemic. And I guess maybe my question before I finish my comment is, why did we go into remote meetings?
Because it got worse.
I believe we started going to, into remote meetings when one of us needed to quarantine. And then we were flipping back and forth when we would be able to be out of quarantine. And then we would need to go back into quarantine because of another one of us.
Well, we're out of quarantine, we've been out of quarantine for multiple months, correct?
Yeah.
It depends, I guess, on if someone's exposed and then they're on quarantine and then one of us isn't here.
Okay, so we're sending our children, our staff, our families to work into school. And it bothers me and embarrasses me that we would ask others to do things that we're not willing to do. Um, when we've been in the WRPS studios, um, social distancing has been respected. Um, we have been, um, seated quite far apart, we've been masked. I, I, I really don't understand why we would not, um, be meeting remotely when we're asking our colleagues and our children to go into schools. Um, if it's, if it's safe enough for them, why isn't it safe enough for us?
I think that we were doing what is necessary in doing what is unnecessary. And meeting in person sort of became unnecessary. We can't have, um, visitors into WRPS. So every time we went to have curriculum corner, we would have to go remote. Um, anytime we had any elder person present, like Bob Mahoney, wait, let me finish this.
Hey, Dan, let her finish.
Let me finish.
Yeah, let her finish.
Don't yell at me, Tom, do not be.
You're not listening.
Gentlemen, gentlemen, take a deep breath, both of you. Okay, let me finish. Last week on Monday, we had Mr. Mahoney here. We would not have been able to have Mr. Mahoney come in person, we would have then went remote. We would have been flipping back and forth, going remote and going back. So here we are to have a conversation, so we can all have a conversation about if we want to be in person and if we want to be remote. We're not going to attack each other, we're not going to bully each other into our opinions, we're all allowed to have an opinion. So here we are, having a conversation as all adults will, okay? Settle down. So, because we were having to go back and forth and people weren't allowed into WRPS, the same as no one is allowed into the schools, we decided to stay remote. So here we are, the numbers had been high, now the numbers are starting to come down. Now we are able to have this conversation, just like we just had the conversation between ten to fourteen days. We are able to have this conversation again. Okay? It's okay for you to not to agree with me, Dan, and I can't hear you, did we lose your volume?
No, no, I was sorry, I wasn't talking to you, I was talking to my son who just came into the room.
Okay, so, that's, I'm gonna, that's where I'll stop. Do you want to continue, Mr. Biggins?
Go ahead, move on, I, that's all I had to say.
Okay, does anyone else have comments or questions? Go ahead, Jamie.
Um, question, um, is it a all or nothing? And I know, um, we were going virtual, depending on the curricula, or not curriculum corner, depending on the agenda. Um, obviously, consistency is beneficial. Um, I just wanna, uh, discuss the ability to, um, potentially have both, and I don't know how we would do that. Um, I do enjoy meeting in person, um, I do enjoy meeting virtually. Obviously, I am not in Rockland right now, and I would not be able to join the, join the meeting if I was not, um, if it was in person. So I guess, from a flexibility standpoint, I know it is allowing us to have these conversations and for me to participate in these conversations. Um, so I guess I like both, I don't think one is better than the other. Um, I do think relationships get built in a, in-person setting. Um, but how do we kind of move forward where we're not losing people? Where we're not, you know, causing confusion and needing reminders that this Monday it's in person and this Monday it's virtual. Um, so I just wanted to, to maybe make alternatives. Maybe there is opportunities for us to try going back in person or we keep going virtual. I don't really have the solution, but I think it's between us as a group of five plus the senior admin. And then those are the outliers of the, who would be coming in, right? Who are the, uh, individuals that would normally not be able to speak at a school committee meeting if we were in person? And, um, what impacts do those, um, updates have? Um, so I just.
Thank you, Jamie.
We, I don't think we have a, a right or wrong, I do think it, it's, it's about us, um, still doing our job as elected school committee members for the children, right? So having the ability to have an emergency meeting, having the ability to make these decisions, um, then just go from there. And I know it's not all other town committees either, but I watch a lot of their Zoom meetings um, on the WRPS channel. Um, and I don't know if, has any of our town committees gone back in person? And I know it's a little different because, you know, we are supporting the schools and, and other employees, you know, our students and our, our staff are there. Um, I just wanna make sure that we're being the most effective school committee possible, right? And we're all getting a chance to vote on all of the topics and not, um, you know, if you're away or if you're here, you're missing things, right? We're in a virtual world, it is easy. Um, but I guess that's all I wanted to say.
Thank you. Tom, Mr. Mills? Do you have anything? Emily?
Uh, just kind of to echo what Jamie was just saying, um, I can either go either way right now. I like, I enjoy the flexibility of the Zooms, but at the same time, building relationships and having the conversations in person or in the same room at least is definitely beneficial. Um, from a health standpoint, i- it's probably safer to keep doing Zoom meetings. Um, everything can be done over Zoom. And to Dan's point, yes, we are sending the children to school. But at the same time, children have, as we've all said, children belong in school. We don't need to be in WRPS for, in our meetings. We can get most of the same work done on, over Zoom, is my point, but that's all.
Thank you, Emily. That is a point, a good point, Emily, that the students, we have figured out, they obviously do better in person and they need to be in person. That is a point, a good point, Emily, that the students, we have figured out, they obviously do better in person and they need to be in person. I will add that when the faculty in the schools are meeting, they are not meeting by meeting into each other's offices. They are meeting on Zoom and Google meets in their own offices and coming together that way. We are not the staff, obviously, we are our own people, but I do think that if this Zoom is harder as the chair, I will be honest. But it is giving us the flexibility to be able to be wherever we are in our world, whether we're working from home or we're working in an office or wherever we are and still be able to conduct what we need to conduct as far as business and not need to worry about if someone is on quarantine or not on quarantine and those sorts of things. Anyone else? I don't wanna shut anyone off. Okay. Do we want to have a motion one way or the other, a motion to stay, to go into person or a motion to stay remote? I don't know, Jamie, you had said if there was a possibility of flexing. We were doing that and we would end up, in one instance, we had a school committee meeting that night and we had to call to go to remote that same day. It does cause a bit of confusion. There's no real deadline with this virus. You don't know come Thursday or Friday when we booked to be in person, that come Monday, someone's not gonna become a close contact. I'm not sure. You know, do we make it so that we have no visitors and then we have no curriculum corner? We have no, those sorts of things. So I think if we decide to go in person, then we need to then make, make that next step of, what does that involve? Go ahead, Jamie.
Um, and this might be more to WRPS, but if we are in person, can we have virtual individuals via Zoom? Or something else? Like, is there a hybrid model where we would be together? And the people that we would need to bring into WRPS could be virtual. And I don't, I don't know if that's feasible. I'm guessing they would be a floating head on a laptop and we would be in person, but I don't know how that all works from a technology standpoint. So I just was, was curious if that was a hybrid model like we have hybrid school, right?
Mrs. Hennessy, we can, I can check that out for you.
I don't know that answer, Jamie. If, when we get in there, if we then have them Zoom and then they're on a camera and then how would they film? I mean, on a Chromebook or a laptop and then how do we film them from there? I don't know how that would work.
I have a comment slash question. I know some of the staff and including us have been traveling. So if we were to go in person, would we require a negative test before a school committee member or anybody from the administration goes into WRPS?
Go ahead, Jane.
Sorry, I was muted. We do adhere to the, the Commonwealth of Massachusetts travel policy. We have no flexibility in, in that regard at all. But we do have our, you know, the testing capacity here with, you know, twenty-four hour turnaround, contractually it's twenty-four to forty-eight, but we're averaging twelve to fifteen hours. If we get the lab results there by one-thirty in the afternoon, we generally have them by ten o'clock the next morning.
Okay, thank you. Any other thoughts or questions or concerns? No. So what do we wanna do? Do we want to have a motion? Do we want to table this so we have more information from WRPS? As far as if we figure out if we're in person, what does that involve for visitors? Or what? Those five of us, we're here together as a team.
How does, Madam Chairman, how does, um, how does it work right now for visitors? I mean, right now, we're on a Zoom meeting and we don't have a whole lot of visitors on our Zoom meetings. I, I guess, is that a huge impact thing compared to going in-person meetings or not?
Do you, I meant visitors as like Bob Mahoney and curriculum corner and the nurse with the child that was choking as the great, right? All those people each week that come on are considered visitors into WRPS, into the school.
So it'd be, and I think, I think for the question is, I think it may be worth consideration to find out if there is a a, a method or technological method by which that we could have guests zoomed in or phoned in or Skyped in during our in-person meetings and maybe that is worth exploring.
Right.
I think that's a good idea. Yeah, let's talk to WRPS and find out how they feel.
And I have a question on, can we define visitor to RPS? Because if it's a teacher or curriculum corner is usually a current RPS staff member, right? So are they not allowed in as a visitor or, like, I guess the visitors or the people that are allowed in are just us? And anyone else is a visitor or is it a visitor is someone outside of the Rockland Public School system? So the child is okay because they go to our school and the nurse is okay and the principals are okay because they're members of our school community. So I guess just defining who WRPS considers a visitor.
If I, if I, if I may, Madam Chair.
May, Jane. I was gonna ask you be.
Okay. The governor has issued, I believe in, in March, issued some guidance that we could look to on open meeting law. One of the things that this platform does afford is in posting the agenda, we are required to put the Zoom link so the public can attend this meeting. We haven't had much of that, but folks can't attend, can't attend the meeting via Zoom. So for Rockland employees, we are discouraging, you know, cross-building activity. But, you know, certainly for a curriculum corner, I believe that would be, you know, appropriate. So, but we're not, we are not allowing outside members into our, into, inside the buildings at this.
Alright, question.
Then you.
I, I, the only comment I had with that is that usually when we have curriculum corner, we have the parents and grandparents and visitors like that. They show up for that because their kids.
Exactly what I was gonna say next time is it's not just the student and then it ends up to be the parents and then, you know, they're.
Whoever else.
Right.
Godparents, whatever, because they like to see their kids on TV and their grandkids and stuff like that. So, you know, that's a consideration, yeah.
And a good, good point and a good one, a good point, but I think the other piece to consider is how important and what a great experience it is for the kids to come in for curriculum corner and be honored. And it's not quite the same for kids on a FaceTime call, I guess. And, and I, and I don't know what the answer is and I wonder if maybe we could consider even other ideas out of the box. And we're used to meeting in WRPS studios within the space that's there and the available space that's there is obviously limiting. But we do have other meeting spaces in town. I mean, we've had town meeting. We had it in our schools auditorium. We have big gyms. You know, and I think a big important part of these meetings and a big reason why we have them is for information to be given to the public and to the voters of Rockland, which they're not really able to participate in the meetings through Zoom calls. And a lot of times it may be troublesome to have access if you don't, you know, get the local TV station or what have you. So, I mean, I don't know. I don't know what the exact answer is, but I just wonder if there's a way that we can offer better accessibility to these meetings, to the community, while also I think doing the important work that we do with the relationships, as you mentioned, but also leading by example. And I guess that's my biggest concern about all this. I'm not suggesting we do anything ham-handedly. So I don't know that, I, you know, I understand if we don't have an answer to this question tonight. But it's just important to me, and I'm sorry if things got emotional, but it's important to me that where we're asking our kids to send kids to school and we're asking, you know, our staff to go into the buildings and we're telling them it's safe, we should show them that it's safe. So those are my thoughts and I, and I don't necessarily think that if, if, if the committee is agreeable, that we don't necessarily have to have a decision tonight, but maybe some good questions have been brought up tonight as to maybe moving towards this, whether it be, you know, flexibility of venue or the ability to have, you know, a hybrid way by which that if we meet in person or if, and we can have guests on, you know, with technology or if one of our members should need to be quarantined or not feeling well, that they could still attend the meeting. You know, maybe there's a best answer that we're not all aware of yet at this moment.
Think about it.
I hear you, Dan. I agree. I think that it's a good conversation. I think it was great to bring it up and have this conversation. I think this is also going to be fluid. Many of this is what it is. I think in the gym, for instance, I believe they're set up for lunches and whatnot. And then it would be, we need to figure out like custodians, cleaning, because now we have gone in. Now they need to re-clean from after us and sorts of things. So I think all of this is going to take a little bit more time to figure out and cross. And, and that's what this will all be. Is that good? Anyone else have any questions, concerns? Okay. Do we want a motion then? I'll accept a motion to then table. Do we want a table so we can talk about this going forward?
Table to do research and stuff like that.
Second.
Okay, all those in favor, I'm gonna roll call. Well, I'm sorry, Jamie, you're all jumped up, but I have to roll call. I'm sorry. That was great.
I was raising my hand, so, you know, it's all good.
So Mrs. Hennessy, I'll start with you.
Yes, yes to table.
Mrs. Davidson?
Yes, yes to table.
Mr. Biggins?
Yes.
And Mr. Mills?
Yes.
And I'm a yes as well. Okay. Now we'll move on to COVID testing. Jane, oh, my screen shifted and I lost your head.
Welcome to the club. Alright, so I asked for this to be put on the agenda. I just wanted to give us, give you, you folks a brief update on that today we have conducted five hundred and forty-six tests. Of those five hundred and forty-six tests, four hundred and fifty-seven have been negative and eighty-nine have been positive. That is approximately a sixteen percent positivity rate among testing. But keep in mind, we are only testing symptomatic people and people identified as close contacts or close contacts of close contacts. So I would not expect that to mirror the background activity at the, within the town. So that positivity rate does not give me any cause for concern, except for those unfortunately who have been ill, you know, with COVID. And very many of them have also been asymptomatic as well of that, of those eighty-seven positive. Unfortunately, as I mentioned earlier, our code, our allocation from the town for the Plymouth County COVID money has been exhausted. We have been using that Plymouth County money to pay for this. We have, it costs from January, for the month of January, it cost us approximately twenty thousand dollars. So if we bring that forward, that's a hundred thousand dollars that we're looking to within our own budget if no additional money becomes available that this would qualify for. Right now, we have been testing students, staff, family members of students and staff and town hall, general government and public safety employees and their families. We, I met with the nurses the Thursday before they went on vacation to discuss whether or not we need to begin restricting the testing to first of all, only school personnel and then if we should limit it to only student and staff and not family members. I'm exceptionally hesitant to do that because I, we've had, many of us have had this conversation offline, but we have seen a significant increase in complete family activity with COVID that we weren't seeing in the fall. It seems if one person within the household is positive, several members, not necessarily all, but several members within that household are becoming positive. That was not the case earlier on in the year and I think our early testing. And we've also during that meeting, we have some quarantine guidance that we're gonna be sharing with individuals. We think there is some confusion in, in, within our school community on what quarantine, what quarantining does and does not mean. And there are some very helpful hints for family, household members to quarantine from each other and protect each other from the person who's either ill or identified as a close, as a close contact. So we are concerned about this, this funding, our current funding situation. I wanted to bring that to your attention. And, but I, I have to say, I believe very strongly in this program. I think to Mr. Biggins' point earlier in the evening, we have significantly reduced our third cohort with the contact of the contact. Our nurses feel very strongly in that program. And having the, the contacts, the, the household members of a close contact stay home until the close contact test negative. Our nurses feel very strongly about that. And with this testing, it allows us to do that and still have a very small one to a half day impact on staffing and time on learning. So I'm committed to finding a funding source to continue this. But as it currently stands, it's going to have to come out of our operating budget, which as you know, we're already at an eight hundred and fifty-six thousand dollar projected deficit for the current fiscal year. So that, that is the status of, of our current testing program. It's a matter that I wanted to bring to your attention. The town, through the, the health agent has received a grant for free community-wide testing. We did this not last weekend, but the weekend before at Memorial Park School where we allowed our school to be used for free community testing for any Rockland employee or any Rockland resident. That's general government and school. The, the folks who came were not, they, they preferred to move their location to the high school with a tent. So the health agent was going to rent a tent and put it up in the parking lot. Both Mr. Shum and Dr. Harrison have signed off and recommend that we accommodate this request. It would be this Saturday from eight to four and on Sunday from eight to two. And that would be testing for any Rockland resident or Rockland employee, town or school to be tested between eight and four and eight and two. The towns portion of the CARES Act allocation would fund the cost for any custodial overtime or hourly rate that would be involved for Saturday or Sunday. This would reduce our need to provide testing to our returning staff and families on Saturday and Sunday for vacation travel testing requirements to adhere to mask regulations for travel. So we are recommending that the school committee allow us to make our property available to the health agent this Saturday from eight to four and Sunday eight to two with the tent being dismantled Sunday afternoon so we can open school on Monday if that would be.
Who's providing the tent?
The CARES Act town allocation.
Okay. Any other questions? Go ahead, Emily.
The testing that was done on the town hall employees or the fire and police departments and their families, can those be billed to those departments since we're a little tight on our budget?
I really hope we don't have to split here, we don't have to nickel and dime. I think it's a tremendous community cooperative relationship. And I also want to keep control of it. I don't want to abdicate this testing to someone else because it's primarily to keep our school safe. Yeah, and to reduce this third cohort. And now to implement testing on day nine. So, you know, I, without signing, I, I really would prefer to not have to manually bill fifty dollars a whack and separate out. We get, we get one bill. I want to be a team player here. Do you know, and we've been working very cooperatively. We do not feel that, that there's been any frivolous request on behalf of the town. Just as we have to go through a building nurse, they need. Just as we have to go through a building nurse, they need to go through the health agent in order to be scheduled and then the health agent contacts the head nurse directly. And together they agree on testing. So I don't feel like it's something that's been abused and I certainly wanna help them keep their building safe.
Okay.
I agree.
Do I have a motion to move it from MP to the high school parking lot? Not even sure. We didn't motion to get it started on, we didn't vote to get it started on Memorial Park. But I figured we were here and having the conversation, so I motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
No other questions before we go to a vote? Okay, you're all nodding no. Go ahead, Jamie.
Is it the same lab that's doing the testing for, it's two different, two different streams of?
It's two different streams. So I, I'm working with our, our nurses because again, especially specifically on the Sunday testing, I want to be sure that this testing is gonna be back in time for families to come to school on Monday or Monday afternoon. You know, sometimes as the case may be and for staff. So, you know, we had made two testing times available for our families on Saturday and Sunday of this coming weekend to, to ensure that, you know, because again, depending on lab, sometimes I get the results at nine o'clock at night. Sometimes I get them at eleven at night. Sometimes I get them at two in the morning. Sometimes I get them at eleven the next day. So that's why we implemented the Saturday schedule, testing for, for our staff. So I wanna check with town hall on what their contract specifically states before I eliminate our testing this weekend.
I think that's a smart idea. Okay, we have a motion in a second, so I'm gonna roll call vote. We'll start with you, Mrs. Davidson.
Yes.
There's Jamie. I was afraid to call on you.
Sorry. As Dan had, child came in the room. So I was like.
That's okay.
I approve. Yes, yes.
Mr. Biggins?
Yes.
And Mr. Mills?
Yes.
And I am a yes as well. So that's the five of us. So we'll move on to public service announcements. I know you guys have your littles waiting. Jamie, I'll start with you.
I don't have anything. I guess just continue to enjoy this school February vacation and, and be safe. And be ready for Monday.
Thank you. Mrs. Davidson? Nothing tonight for me. Thank you. You're welcome. Mr. Biggins?
I just wanna say great season to the Rockland High School hockey team. They had a great season. I mean, all our winter sports are having great seasons, but I just felt terrible for them that the circumstances of our pandemic has cut their season short a little bit. Really stinks and I hope all those guys that were affected by it are healthy and feeling better and no one's sick and their families are well. But congratulations on a great season and I'm, I'm sorry if the circumstances brought it to where it was.
Thank you. Mr. Mills?
Everybody just be safe, healthy and students, get your work done. Any reading that you need to get done, any homework that you owe or something like that, get it done. Have a good week.
Thank you, Mr. Mills, and I have nothing either. So that's all we have. May have a motion, entertain a motion.
Motion to the, the jury.
Second, I'll, I have to roll call again. Here we go, Mrs. Hennessy.
Yes.
Mrs. Davidson?
Yes.
Mr. Biggins?
Yes.
Mr. Mills?
Yes, yes, yes.
And I am a yes. Have a good night, everyone. Thank you.